I now call and order the regular session meeting of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, September 1st, 2015, at 6:30. Roll call?
Mayor Archie.
Here.
Vice Mayor Larson.
Here.
Commissioner Terrapini.
Here.
Commissioner Banther.
Here.
Commissioner Seber.
Dear.
Tonight's invocation we give by Reverend Bob Russell of All Family of Faith Church, would everyone stand, please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, Father?
Heavenly Father, we come together tonight in the mighty name of Jesus Christ, thanking you for the opportunity to present the needs of the people of Tarpon Springs. We ask for guidance and wisdom for each member of the city council and provide patience for those presenting their concerns and seeking answers. Father, we thank you for the privilege that living in a country allows us to govern ourselves, for the freedoms that we enjoy, protected by those who have served and given their lives through our armed forces. So much we take for granted. Tonight, again, I ask for a special blessing for the family of Harris County Sheriff Deputy Darren Goforth of Houston, Texas, who was senselessly gunned down. Father, we know how this family and community feels as we too lost one of our own almost a year ago. The pain that still hurts this town, we will never forget Charlie. And sadly, another police officer was killed just this morning. Father, Lord Almighty, please comfort their family. Father, you tell us in Psalms 133:1, how good and pleasant it is when peoples, when God's people live together in unity. Our country seems more divided than ever, Father Almighty. Help us by guiding the love you create towards each other and stop this uncontrollable hatred. We ask for blessings for those and protection for those who risk their lives so that we may enjoy ours, our police force, our fire department, our paramedics, and our medical team members. Father, we ask all this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
We will now go to public comments on any item that will not be discussed this evening.
Bear with me, I'm ninety years old and a long stretch fighting the finish line. And good evening to all of you on the Board of Commissioners. I came to Tarpon Springs as a snowflake in the sixties, a snowbird in the seventies, and as a resident in the mid-eighties. Easily annoyed at the state of my newly adopted city, I reluctantly became an activist, appearing frequently before the Boards of Commissioners since 1986. I've experienced five mayors and five city managers up until now. In essence, I've been involved more than most of you and assumedly know more about the successful operation of a city government and on the negative side, the cunning machinations a blind constituency never become aware of until a disgruntled courageous person comes first and blows the whistle. I've been the official spokesman for the Woods Homeowners Association and the two neighboring subdivisions when we had Colin Plowkins, before the city and the county governments, since 1987. You could say my relationship with both governments was normal, complimentary in the wake of successful solutions, and at times adversarial. For instance, I remember the prolonged process of getting rid of the large garbage dump at the dead end of Distant Avenue in the back end of the Woods, back end gate of the Woods in 1988. It took more than eight construction dumpsters to clean it up. Also, six months of requested a street light for that area and not until a murder was committed there did we get the light. And the lengthy back and forth over the proposed sports complex at the 69 acre landfill. And the attempt by the city to eliminate the water master meters in the various of subdivisions and to impose single water meters for each unit at a high cost to each owner. The attempt by the city, I'm sorry, the three-year-long battle to get rid of approximately twenty, twenty, one-hundred-and-twenty foot by thirty foot by twelve foot high piles of septic garbage at the landfill that stenched a one-to-three mile radius, making it impossible for people to engage in outdoor activity. Fortunately, on a four-to-one vote, the city came forth and averted a very costly lawsuit. Now, before Mr. Funchen took over his department, I often times observed the city projects being performed by two employees while as many as four or more stood there watching them to do the work. What a waste of taxpayer money. More currently, I've attended many of the professional and amateur performances at our theater and as few as thirty or forty in attendance for those productions. Those productions cost thousands of dollars. What a waste of taxpayer money. And in view of the SpongeBob debacle costing the taxpayers from $300,000, I think it is time for the city to investigate the performance of each department and its implications and finally consider re-engaging an internal auditor. I know that sounds bad, but I think you need it. I also reiterate my position on creating an independent committee to give voice to city employees, the same as the unions do for the police and firemen. The city has lost many high-skilled professionals in the last five years. And is the city going to continue providing internships for other cities? And now comes a kicker. This is my last appearance, as I'll be moving to California within a week. And I'm leaving the city I love and many of the people that I've dealt with over the years, had fun with, had disagreements with, but to some total was, we're people and we lived a normal life and it was great. The French philosopher, Jean-Bert, had something to say like this, "Without labor, capital dies. Likewise, without a high morale group of employees, a city will decay." How do I know? I went through two of them before I came here. I wish you all well and a great future. Thank you.
Thank you. Before you leave there, Mr. LaRocque, we have a little something for you. You know, we know every day hasn't been a good day for you or for us, but we know that you've always had Tarpon Springs best interest at heart. We could never pay you for all that you've done, the dollars that you saved us, but we wanted to give you something so that you can remember us while you are on the beaches out in California. So I'll come right here and give you this. You know, every time I've had the honor of giving this key out, people always ask, you know, what it will open. And I always said it opens the hearts of all the people of Tarpon Springs, you know. And you've done that continuously with your hard work.
Thank you. If you'll give me a minute, one more minute.
One more minute?
I'd like to thank Chief Cochin for all he has done for my community and especially watching my property while I'm gone for months at a time. Paul Smith, who I've had to interrelate with, certainly Tom Funchen. And I can't go on. After thirty years, it's hard to remember everybody and everything. And of course, Mark R. Kuller, his dad and I were friends right on up until he passed. And I think we're still friends, Mark. And despite my remarks, I'm here, hopefully, with some constructive comments, and I hope you don't take offense to them. Thank you very much. Thank you, Arch.
Appreciate it. Cafalos, 205 Leafwood Road. Several years ago, I had the opportunity of meeting Joe LaRocque and realized just how much he cared about Tarpon Springs. He has served on many city-based committees and mentored many people, including me, and he was never afraid to state his concerns and beliefs on any city matters. It's unfortunate for Tarpon Springs that we are losing Joe to California, but after looking at the state of affairs in California, maybe, just maybe, he can help. Joe had quite a professional career, a wonderful family life, and a very supportive and encouraging wife. But when they decided to slow down, they moved to Tarpon Springs. Little did they know that he would be so called on by various city representatives and friends to help for so many years. He has been a friend, a mentor, and a leader. Recently, he came to my house for New Year's Day dinner, and although he knew no one in the room, he left with many new friends and something in common with people he had never been, never met before. He has a wealth of knowledge, experience, and he always has been a tremendous asset to Tarpon. He never was trying to put a financial feather in his cap. He did not try to sell the city anything, nor did he try to do anything illegal or unethical in his relationship with the city government. He is a friend to Tarpon Springs, and while you might not all agree with him, it is naturally understood that he cares about people and that they live productive lives. And it is easy to see that his love for Tarpon Springs is sincere. Everything he has done in Tarpon Springs is without any personal financial reward and done so with honor and pride. I hope that as he leaves Tarpon Springs, he's remembered for his tremendous attitude and the fact he is a gentleman and a wonderful friend to Tarpon. Thank you, Joe. Thank you.
Peter Delakis, 514 Ashland Avenue. Good evening, Mayor, Board, Squire Trask, Chief Cochin, C. Manager, Mrs. Lecourse, and Ms. Jacobs. The Reverend touched a little bit on a point that I wanted to talk about tonight, but I want to go a little further. I don't know about you, but last week when I turned on CNN and found another senseless killing by someone who got a gun. I don't know if you watched The Daily Show with Jon Stewart, but after the murder of nine people at the Evangelical Baptist Church in Savannah, he put it bluntly. We spend all this money and lives and effort to keep us safe from people abroad, yet we neglect to protect us here. And how do we do it when people have access to guns that shouldn't be able to? It's a fine line. It's a very fine line. I, I, I just couldn't imagine the pain of Mr. Parker and the West family. You work so hard all your life to raise your kids. You see them on the threshold of them becoming something valuable in life, and they're snuffed away by some idiot? I don't know. I don't know where the answer leads, but I do feel it starts with us. We can't keep saying that the Second Amendment, which is the right to defend ourselves against foreign powers and other governments, is an excuse to allow fellow citizens to murder innocent people. Chief Cochin probably runs up against this quite a bit. And I just fear for those because where are we safe now? Where is the next time somebody goes off on a rage and shoots your loved ones? I don't know the answer. And not everybody believes in God or love or compassion, but somehow we have to find a way to really keep weapons out of people's hands who are not responsible or mature or stable enough to not commit these types of acts. In God's name, I wish peace to all of them. And it's not the first time and it won't be the last. Just recently, the guy from the Colorado murder shooting's got, what, nineteen life prison terms. And Colin Biden, and Sandy Hook, and Savannah, and Texas, now in Illinois, and we had our own here. It's gotta stop.
Another public comment we go to proclamation. Item number one is September 11th Remembrance Day. This reads, proclamation, City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, whereas on September 11th, 2001, nearly 3,000 innocent men, women, and children lost their lives in a tragic act of terror, whereas amid danger and uncertainty, countless civilians and first responders risked their lives to search through the wreckage of the World Trade Center, the Pentagon, and the field in Stony Creek Township, Pennsylvania. Whereas the Edward M. Kennedy Serve America Act approved by Congress and enacted into law on April 21st, 2009, designated September 11th to be observed as the annual National Day of Service and Remembrance. Whereas on this National Day of Service and Remembrance, the City of Tarpon Springs encourages residents to participate in service projects throughout the city. Whereas the City of Tarpon Springs joined people from across the country and around the world in remembering and honoring the victims and heroes of this day fourteen years ago. Now therefore, I, David R. Archie, by virtue of authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs, hereby recognize September 11th, 2015, as 9/11 Remembrance Day. In the City of Tarpon Springs, I call as observers to the attention of all of our residents. Item number two is another proclamation. It's Library Card Sign-Up Month. This reads, proclamation, City of Tarpon Springs, whereas the library card is the most important school supply of all, whereas libraries play an important role in the education and development of children, and whereas the library is bridge the learning gap by offering a wide range of digital and print resources, whereas libraries offer free access to technology and innovative educational program, and whereas libraries continue to transform and expand their services in ways that meet the needs of the communities they serve. And whereas a free library card is the coolest card you can own. Now therefore, I, David R. Archie, by virtue of authority vested in me as the Mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, do hereby proclaim September 2015 Library Card Sign-Up Month in Tarpon Springs. I encourage everyone to sign up for the smartest card at your library. And Mr. R. Kellis?
Mayor and Commissioners, thank you for this proclamation. I'd like to encourage everybody to come to the Tarpon Springs Library this month and sign up for a card. Not only do you have a chance to be entered to win prizes, but you can gain access to hundreds of thousands of materials in our countywide catalog, including the latest bestsellers, DVDs, CDs, as well as eBooks, digital audiobooks, downloadable music, streaming video, and online databases on subjects like business research, job assistance, homework help, auto repair, language learning, and I can go on and on. Also, I'd like to mention a couple of program highlights we have for this month. September 15th, we have a business workshop by the Service Corps of, Service Corps of Retired Executives. And on September 16th, we have a STEM workshop for children, STEM being science, technology, engineering, and math, and focusing on coding. And coming soon, we have our Digital Media Lab equipment will be available to the students at Tarpon Springs Middle School for their preserving our past project, as well as to the general public. So I encourage you all to come to the library this month and throughout the year. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is a presentation, is item number three, MPO and PPC unification. And we have Whit Blanton, the new executive director here with us.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I'd like to just say how pleased I am to be back here in the City of Tarpon Springs. It's been a few years, but back in 2008, nine, and ten, I was your transportation planning consultant. And now I have an opportunity to live here in Pinellas County, and I'm extremely excited to be over here. I worked for the City of Tarpon Springs on the establishment of the city's multimodal transportation district, which was a key part of your redevelopment objectives for downtown and the Sponge Docks and much of the other area of the core part of the city. That was the first time that we got the Florida Department of Transportation to agree to allow local governments to look at transportation from a different lens, as a way of supporting economic activity as instead of looking at a way of just getting cars through a city. And I think that was a real landmark decision. And a number of other communities, not only here in Pinellas County, but throughout this Tampa Bay region, have followed your, your lead on that effort. And I think that was a, it was an important groundbreaking project. But I no longer wear a consultant hat. I'm now here full-time as the new executive director of the Pinellas Planning Council and Pinellas Metropolitan Planning Organization. And that, that, those were two separate agencies. The PPC was responsible for countywide land use plans, and so we would review a city's proposed future land use amendment or future change, make sure it was consistent with countywide plan. And the MPO has been around for many years, and its responsibility is to direct federal and state transportation dollars to Pinellas County in a way that makes sense and that fits a strategic vision. Having those two organizations aligned is a first for the state of Florida. There's not a single agency anywhere in Florida that has a land use and transportation linkage like we have here in Pinellas County. I'm now eight weeks on the job, and I'm working hard to align our resources, align our staff, and articulate a clear vision for how we're going to move forward as an agency. To that end, we have a workshop with our thirteen-member governing board on September 21st. We have a regular board meeting on September 9th, but September 21st is a special meeting. It's going to be from 8:30 to 12:30 at the epicenter at St. Pete College off Olmerton Road, 58th Street. And the reason I bring that to your attention is because our board members, and I think here in Pinellas County, we've really been needing to focus on a strategic plan for how we integrate land use and transportation countywide, how we elevate key transportation and land use decisions so that we're looking out for the long-term benefit of Pinellas County. And one of the things that we're going to ask our board members to evaluate is to take a fresh look at the US-19 corridor. And the reason for that is we have spent the better part of 25 years in this county building the interchanges, the overpasses along at Gulf to Bay and Drew Street and working our way up. The next one in line is at Curly Road. Our long-range plan has a, has a plan in place to continue building those interchanges all the way up to Pasco County Line, including Tarpon Avenue. And that's a billion dollars of investment that if that's not the direction we really want to go as an agency, we really, we have a better way to spend some of that money. And I wanted to get your opinion on that and see if I could get any feedback, because we're, we're going to have that conversation. And while many of those projects are a long way away, the reason we're looking at the US-19 corridor is really what has been the effect of those interchanges along the development and land use patterns along that corridor over the years. Clearwater is changing its land development plan to enable more economic development in the area of the US-19 corridor, but it's been a real struggle. Building the highway overpasses has really undermined the economic vitality and viability of a lot of those businesses. And I've heard some concerns from folks that that's a shared concern coming up into the Palm Harbor, unincorporated county, and then up into Tarpon Springs. So I just raised that issue. The vision may still call for long-term, those interchanges need to be built. Tarpon Avenue and Tampa Road are very high-crash locations. We have a lot of traffic crashes involving not just cars, but pedestrians and bicyclists at those two intersections. So something clearly needs to be done, but those are very expensive kinds of fixes. And if we can use those dollars in other, in other ways in other parts of the county, then we should consider it. We're also asking the board to look at other issues like enhancing beach access throughout the county, protecting vulnerable users, bicyclists and pedestrians to make their travel safer and more effective, and looking at the gateway area, which is the economic engine of Pinellas County in a lot of respects, but is a very disjointed, disaggregated, and disconnected set of land uses. So I just wanted to really introduce myself to you all and let you know that I'm here. I hope this isn't my last time here. I know it won't be. Hopefully, next time I come here, I'll be able to work with you on a partnership project where we can maybe match some of the federal transportation dollars we get with some projects that you're looking to accomplish. Because that's really our role now, is not to be the, the oversight agency and the regulatory agency checking out what you're doing, but really to be a partner, to bring dollars to the table and to leverage our resources so that collectively we can achieve more. So I don't have much of a presentation today. I really just wanted to put a name to a face and say that I'm really glad to be back here in Tarpon Springs and look forward to the next opportunity to, to chat with you all on a specific project. And if you have any questions for me today, I'd be happy to try and entertain them now. And if you have any guidance or suggestions for your view of the 19 corridor, that would be welcome as well.
Well, first, I just want to thank you for coming up to Tarpon and letting us put a face with a name. And as I told you, seven years ago, I, I can't remember that. Seven days is hard for me, but.
That's right.
We look forward to working with you. I've had a chance to be on the MPO, PPC, and doing the unification process. And it was a long process, and hopefully we'll be able to do some great things. I guarantee you, when you start talking about overpasses in Tarpon and Tarpon Avenue, you'll get a lot of input.
Yeah.
As it relates to that, so.
We're looking forward to that.
But we look forward to working with you, some great projects. Hopefully, we can do some other things that you kind of started here in the City of Tarpon, seeing those things to its completion. So, thank you.
Absolutely.
Any questions for Mr. Blanton? Thank you. We look forward to seeing you again soon.
Okay. Thank you for the opportunity to be on your agenda tonight.
Thank you. Any public comments on the site? If not, then we'll go to item number two, our old facility update.
Has been moved to the next meeting.
Oh, okay then. Thank you, sir. Any item anybody would like to pull on the consent agenda? Doc, shall we entertain a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Any public comment on the consent agenda? Roll call?
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Terrapini?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. Special consent item number 10, healthcare insurance plan for fiscal year 2016.
Honorable Mayor and Board of Commissioners, Jane Niff and HR Director, I'm here tonight to recommend that the Mayor and Board of Commissioners approve the health insurance plan, Plan 15, provided by the Florida Municipal Insurance Trust, administered by the Florida League of Cities, effective October 1st, 2015, through September 30th of 2016. I don't want to belabor what's in your back-up, but I do think it's worth making a few observations. Putting it bluntly, we've had a bad year with regard Putting it bluntly, we've had a bad year with regard to claims experience. And in the insurance business, there's an old saying, "The claims are the claims are the claims, and somebody has to pay them." So as a result, for every dollar in premium that the league took in or the plan took in, they paid out ninety-five cents in straight claims. That's not including any overhead. In the open market, that would probably bring us a much larger increase than we're experiencing this year. I've been observing and in contact with colleagues in other municipalities, and it appears over the years that there's a direct connection between that ratio that we talked about and the renewal rate. Again, it goes back to paying claims. I need to point out that having looked at a lot of the plans in our region, particularly the Pinellas County, our plan is a particularly competitive one. It's a very good plan. We have, for example, we have four tiers of coverage versus three, which means that employees have more choices. If you have employee plus one, then you're limited to an employee plus a spouse or an employee plus a child. Otherwise, you've got to go straight to family coverage. We offer those two separate tiers. There are some plans, a couple of plans, that offer employee plus two, which means that you can have two people beside yourself on the plan, but then you have to, anything more, and you have to go to the family rate. Some of them don't allow, and it's to limit the cost for the children. We also have a lower calendar year deductible, which is two-hundred-and-fifty and five-hundred dollars. They range anywhere from what we have to three thousand and six thousand dollars for family. And that's not counting the high deductible health plans. I've seen them as high as five and ten in-network and fifteen thousand and thirty thousand out-of-network. We also have a lower out-of-pocket maximum than some of the plans. Obviously, when you have a high deductible plan or one that's going to have a high out-of-pocket max, the cost to the employee, it does shift. We have been able to hold the line on that. I've noticed that we went a few years ago from a straight HMO to what is almost known as a PPO or POS because we do have out-of-network coverage, but it's a, excuse me, a lower percentage contribution by the plan. For in-network, it's ninety-ten. In other words, the plan pays ninety percent and the employee pays ten. Other plans I've seen, and quite a few of them are eighty-twenty. Some of them are even seventy-thirty, and I've seen as high as fifty-fifty. So without mentioning any more details, you're probably bored with them as I move along. We do still pay one hundred percent of the employee premium costs, whereas a lot of other plans are now asking their employees to make a direct contribution. We do still maintain a subsidy on the dependents. And because of the increase this year, we're asking that the city consider splitting the increased cost on a fifty-fifty basis. That's all I have to say.
Yes, thank you. And I appreciate all the work you do that goes into this plan each year. And they help you provide employees year-round in regards to the health insurance. Did we go out to bid this year, or is it only every so many years we do that for our insurance?
No, we are members of a consortium. And under Florida state law, there's not a requirement for the bid process because of the fact that it's pooled, it meets the pooling requirements. It's been my experience over the last fifteen and a half years that you can go out to bid, which benchmarking is always a good thing. But there are companies out there that will buy the business. And then you find in the subsequent years, you end up paying for the claims. Because, again, whatever your claims are, somebody's got to pay them. So basically, it's operated on the premise that a consortium of seventy-five to a hundred entities can get a better deal than a single entity of our size.
I understand that, and I can appreciate that. And I've often said, if we do go out to bid, I guess we have in the past, when we have found out that this is the better plan for us. But with it going up ten percent, I would just think it's encouraging. I think you used the right term, it's just benchmarking, not saying we're going to go out to bid to definitely switch, but to just compare it. And I realize sometimes with different kinds of plans that they'll offer you a lower rate to get in, but we're already jumping ten percent this year. So, I mean, I just, you know, I can't really imagine that if we, there'd be much harm in us just shopping it around. Not so much for this year, it's already done. But for next year, and I just think each year would be good just to have it benchmarked. Because the Florida League is still a vendor, and they can get maybe comfortable if they know that people aren't shopping it around. So I think that might be helpful to do it, and it could be that each year we find out that this plan's the best. But I think when we're talking about something this large in our budget, something that's going up ten percent in our budget, it would be wise to at least go out to bid, as you said, just to benchmark and see. And I realize it's not just dollar for dollar. You're talking plan, plan, benefits. We have the healthcare clinic, things like that. All that goes into consideration. But I think it would be a good exercise each year just to go out for, like you said, just to compare ourselves and just see what else is out there. But thank you. I know this is not easy work to do, so thank you.
Commissioner Tarpan? Thank you. Following up with Commissioner Banther and Ms. Niffen, I appreciate the presentation, everything you do for the city in terms of human resources. A number of years ago, we entered into the agreement with CARE ATC and the freestanding facility. And a big part of that presentation was that the thought that by giving the employees or our employees the opportunity to go see a doctor quicker, add a better convenience to them, et cetera, would potentially lower our insurance premiums and also the claims because we'd be able to give them better care, et cetera. So my question becomes, is there any data that has been produced from CARE ATC or our agreement with them that would show us whether or not that has been realized?
It's my understanding that there will, at a later date, be a presentation on the clinic.
Yeah, it will almost be at our two-year mark. And I've got to look at that date, but the end of October, beginning of November, I got to look when we did that. But when they have those figures, it's already been asked to have a, there'll be a separate item in about a month, which you'll deal with that, and it'll have the two-year record, so we can see the two-year record. As we enter into this last year, which starts, is the last year, we'll have those two years, and that's probably going to come to you in a month on a meeting.
That would be interesting for me. Thank you.
Any public comments on the site? Shall we entertain a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Terpenny?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. Next item is item number eleven, property and casualty and workers' comp insurance. Ms. Niffen again.
Again. I'm here to recommend that the Board of Commissioners approve the renewal of the city's property and casualty and work comp insurance with the Florida Municipal Insurance Trust for a one-year period commencing October first of 2015. When I first came to the city, fifteen and a half years ago, I noticed that our premiums for our risk management were in excess of a million dollars. And as you can see from your backup, that figure has declined significantly. We have, I guess, had some good years. If you look, over the last eight years, I believe, we have, the premium has been reduced by eight-hundred-and-ninety-one thousand dollars. The league in fiscal year two thousand eight, two thousand nine, started returning premium for property insurance that hadn't been used. To date, we have collected or are going to, if we count the twenty-nine thousand and five-sixty that we get this year, three-hundred-and-ninety-one thousand dollars in literally cash, well, check. But at any rate, we've experienced a little blip this year in work comp. The property and casualty, in spite of all our trip and falls, has gone down. But the work comp has inched up a bit, which indicates that, even though we have a safety program, we probably should keep a good eye on our safety measures and keep our training program in place. So I'm recommending that we approve that, you approve that for this year.
Thank you. Just, I guess, my own clarification. After premium is returned, is actually going to be lower than what it was last year, even with the increase?
Yes. Last year, we received thirty-five thousand, three oh three. This year, we're in line for twenty-nine, five-sixty. It's based on the coverages, and then it's done on a per capita. If your premium is so much you participate, I believe they're intending to return almost sixty million, is it sixty million? Or six million, sorry, not sixty, six million dollars in premium to their members this year.
I was really just talking about the bottom line, the total of the premium was eight oh one, six thirty, and this year, it seems like it's seven ninety-six. It's actually less than it was last year, if I'm looking at that right, for the renewal, after the return of the premium.
Actually, what I, on the second page, your total premium for last year was eight oh one, six thirty, and this year, it's eight twenty-five, nine seventy.
And with the return of the premium, it'll be seven ninety-six.
Yes. Yep, exactly.
Any questions? Any public comments? Shall we entertain a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call?
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Terpenny?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. Thank you. We go to item number twelve, award bid number one-five-zero, zero, one-five-zero, one-two-eight, dash B, dash J.J., equipment replacement performing arts center, and it's a rebid.
This issue is, of course, our grant on the auditorium. As you know, we rejected the first bid, it went out. We were able to, again, we came in overbid, but through the help of the Kathy Monahan Foundation, who's going to make up some of the differences of it, we're presenting this package for the auditorium. We are picking up, as a city, the extra twenty thousand for the sound addition. That's a sound addition that's going to help these commission meetings and the sound. So we have the money, in nursing home money left over, to use for that portion. The foundation's going to take the other two alternatives you say there. And again, the money over the five hundred thousand from the grant. We also have, with the Beverly and nursing home deals, money put away for city buildings that we'll use to make up that difference. So there'll be no additional general fund money from it. There'll be the monies we have put aside for buildings to get this auditorium done. Again, we had hoped the second bid, we would come closer to the five hundred thousand grant. But remember, that first five hundred thousand is grant money. So in essence, and then subtracting what the Kathy Monahan Foundation's going to put in, that number that's left is the only number that we will be picking up. And again, that'll come from building money we had set aside from the nursing homes.
Any, Commissioner Tarpan?
Thank you. Mark, I'm trying to wrap my head around this base bid and then the alternatives. First of all, my understanding is that up to five hundred thousand has come from a historic preservation grant?
Yes.
Okay. So then the balance of that, I guess it would be an additional one-hundred-and-thirteen-thousand, six hundred. That's coming from a portion of city funds from the sale of the nursing home, as well as the Kathy Monahan Foundation?
Yes, from, add all to one, and add all to two is coming from the foundation. Three, which is the sound system to help enhance the commission, is coming from us. And the overage from the five hundred thousand, that overage, as you see, the five forty, that overage is coming from that building fund from money from the nursing home.
The five forty. That was the base bid?
Yes, the base bid. That was when we bid again to try to get closer to that five hundred thousand level of the grant.
Right.
But the project and the dimensions and the scope of this building and, you know, trying to convert this old building like we wanted to, you know, we were resigned after the second bid, that was the best we were going to get. And, you know, we needed supplement money to the grant. But again, it's only the forty thousand there, the twenty thousand for the sound system. The foundation's picking up fifty-two and change, fifty-three and change. And that'll get us the whole project, base project, with the top three alternatives that we needed.
Okay, so the alternative four and five is out of the picture?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any additional questions? Any public comments? Shall we entertain a motion?
Move for approval, second.
Roll call?
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Terpenny?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. The next is ordinance and resolutions. Item thirteen is legislative, item fourteen is quasi-judicial. These items would be discussed together but voted on separately. Item thirteen is ordinance twenty fifteen, dash seventeen, application number one-five, dash four-seven, amend future land designation from R.M. to C.L., Tarpon Turtle, first reading.
May I read this? No, go ahead and take it from here.
Okay.
Here, I'm going to go ahead and read ordinance twenty fifteen, dash seventeen first, and then I'm going to read a quasi-judicial statement. And then I'll be swearing, and any witnesses are going to testify as to the zoning matter. Ordinance twenty fifteen, dash seventeen, in ordinance to the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending the future land use map for approximately point eight-two-seven acres. That's thirty-six thousand, thirty-one square feet of property located on the south side of Lake Tarpon Avenue, adjacent to fifteen thirteen Lake Tarpon Avenue, from R.M. Residential Medium to C.L. Commercial Limited, providing for findings and providing for an effective date. I'll read also the quasi-judicial statement for those that are going to testify today. This application to amend zoning is a quasi-judicial proceeding. By law, it is the commission's function at this hearing to make findings of fact based upon evidence presented at the hearing and apply those findings of fact to previously established criteria contained in the Code of Ordinances in order to make a legal decision regarding the application before it. The commission may only consider evidence that the law considers competent, substantial, and relevant to the issues arising from the applicable code section, rather. If that evidence demonstrates that the application has met the criteria established in the Code of Ordinances, the commission is required by law to find in favor of the applicant. By the same token, if the evidence demonstrates the applicant has failed to meet the criteria established in the Code of Ordinances, the commission is required by law to find against the applicant. There is an established procedure which we follow in this quasi-judicial hearing. And it is as follows. All witnesses must give their testimony under oath. All persons testifying at the hearing must give their name and address for the record. All testimony and questioning at the hearing must address matters that are relevant and material to the issues under consideration. City staff will present its testimony and evidence first. The applicant will have the opportunity to cross-examine the city staff and city witnesses. The applicant will then present its witnesses and evidence. City staff will have the opportunity to cross-examine the applicant's witnesses. Absent unusual circumstances to be determined by the commission of parties opening statement and presentation is limited to ten minutes. At that point, the commission will proceed to the public comment portion of the meeting. Members of the public opposing the application will be given an opportunity to present testimony. After all members of the public opposing the application have concluded, members of the public in support of the application will have the same opportunity. Each member of the public is limited to four minutes of testimony. A member of an organization who testifies as part of the organization or group's presentation forfeits his right to speak during the public portion of the meeting. During the public comment portion of the meeting, members of the public present at the hearing may donate their time to a speaker to extend the speaker's time. But in doing so, the person donating the time forfeits his or her right to speak. Each donation will extend the speaker's time an additional two minutes. In no event shall a speaker's time be extended beyond ten minutes of the total speaking time. Following public comment, the applicant and city staff will have the opportunity to present any necessary rebuttal evidence, make a closing argument or summary. The applicant will go first, followed by city staff. Absent unusual circumstances to be determined by the commission of parties closing summary and rebuttal evidence will be limited to ten minutes each. After that, the board, excuse me, the commission will consider the matter. After hearing that, anyone that's going to speak tonight on this matter, if you want to stand matter, if you want to stand up, raise your right hand. I'm going to swear you under oath. You swear that the testimony you're going to give this evening will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Okay, thank you. Please be seated. Now staff will make a presentation.
Good evening, Heather Earl, for the Planning and Zoning Division. This, this application is being requested by the Tarpon Turtle LLC. Again, the basics for the, the project are for a number of lots that they've acquired, that total, a total square footage of thirty-six thousand and thirty-one square feet, or point eight point two seven acres along Lake Tarpon Avenue, adjacent to the existing Tarpon Turtle Restaurant. The applicant is requesting to change the future land use and the zoning designation to recently acquired lots from residential multifamily and R M, which is Residential Medium, and the Land Development Code Two, C L and W D I, C L being Commercial Limited, and W D I Two being Waterfront Development District. The applicant stated purpose for the change is to allow for development of a supplemental and/or overflow parking lot. Staff's evaluation on this is based on the highest and best use allowed in the proposed land use and the zoning designation, as well as consistency and compatibility with the comprehensive plan and the Land Development Code and the surrounding area. Subject properties are located in close proximity to existing residential uses. Currently, there's a situation that exists with employees and staff of the Tarpon Turtle parking along the street to allow for patrons to use their existing parking lot. While the road is of sufficient width to allow for the temporary onsite parking, the only way to allow for sufficient parking for both staff and patrons is to allow for development of additional parking. It's the only way to correct an existing condition that's out there. Basically, the properties in question are not all contiguous. There is a fifty by a hundred and thirty foot parcel that separates the Tarpon Turtle site from the vacant lots to the west. That particular out parcel is owned by the adjacent Tarpon Sail and Tennis Club. It's not part of this application. It will remain R M dash fifteen and R M on the future land use map. This poses a challenge to development of these parcels into a cohesive parking lot because there's this out parcel in between the two sections of the parking, or the two sections of the site. Without a site plan being submitted, it's impossible to restrict the use of this to parking lots. So I want to be clear in this, that this land use change means that any of the potential uses in the Waterfront Development District and the uses allowed that are consistent with the future land use category of Commercial Limited are allowed. And what I'm going to do now is just read into the record those particular uses that are allowed within that district, so everyone's aware of what is allowed. The permitted uses in the W D, other W D Waterfront Development District are commercial off-street parking lots, eating establishments, which includes sit-down restaurants and taverns, emergency services, hotels, convention centers, and/or conference facilities require, will require conditional use review, outdoor cafe of restaurant seating, not, not along the public right-of-way, outdoor markets, also not on the public right-of-way, residential over-ground floor commercial, retail establishments, retail sales establishments, wet slip marinas. Now, the following uses are allowed by conditional use, so they would come in for a secondary application to allow for these type of uses. Those include assembly hall convention centers, business and professional office, boatyards, community assembly, commercial recreation facilities, community service uses, financial institutions, library, museums, galleries, cultural centers, and similar uses, lodging facilities, offshore tourist vessels, personal service establishments, single-family dwelling, dwelling units, tourist homes, and shopping centers. So those are the total types of uses that are allowed within this zoning district. We have to evaluate based on the potential for that lot, those lots to develop. On the land use side, we can't restrict to parking because we don't have a vehicle with this type of application to do that restriction. There is no restrictive covenant as part of this proposal. What is being proposed here is what's called a straight land use change and a straight change to the future land use. With that, the technical review committee reviewed this application on June twenty-fifth, two thousand and fifteen, and had no objections to the request. The planning board likewise reviewed this application on July twentieth, and the planning board discussed the history of the Tarpon Turtle along with the issues, including safety, the impact of on-street parking, noise, potential impacts to adjacent neighbors, and the planning board then voted four to one to recommend approval of this project, and staff is recommending approval of the project. Since the last hearing on this, which essentially due to staff error, we basically had to start from scratch, there has been a lot of backup that's been provided to you. A lot of stuff has come in from the general public. We've also had some information provided by the applicant, including the new deeds that show the Tarpon Turtle as the, as the owner, as the property praiser's website also shows, and also new application that indicate that the applicant is in fact the Tarpon Turtle. They are the owner and the applicant on this particular project. And with that, I can answer any additional questions you might have.
Thank you. The last time this was discussed, there, there was talk about a restrictive covenant as a possible mechanism to restrict the property to being utilized only for parking, and I, and I now understand that that is not an option, or at least it's not an option this evening. I, I wonder if our city attorney could chime in on exactly what the options would be for the applicant, and is there an avenue where a restrictive covenant limiting the, the use to parking could be utilized?
It can't be utilized in the zoning application process. It cannot at all. As for restrictive covenant, it's sometime in the future when the site plan comes back for approval, for consideration. You can place conditions upon it at that time, depending upon the actual use and the location where the activity is going to occur. You can also limit access. You could limit light. You can limit sound. A lot of different things that you can include in that restrictive covenant if you wanted to go to that distance, but it's not until the site plan approval process for the actual development of the parcel can you do that.
So in the meantime, theoretically, if tonight's agenda item were to be approved of, that, that would be allowing for the primary uses, including office, personal services, retail, commercial, business services, and temporary lodging?
Whatever the permitted uses are, yes. As for conditional uses, it would require one more review and one more application to come back to the sitting.
I, I may have additional questions, but that's, that's it for now. Thank you.
Just as a follow-up on, I, I get to you too, Commissioner Seaver. Can the applicant voluntarily enter into that restrictive covenant?
Yes, that the city cannot require.
Well, we can't require, but they could step forward into that.
Absolutely.
Because, Mr. Seaver, did I go to your?
Okay, yeah, basically, I'm having the same questions. If we do vote yes on this, before anything else can be built on this property or other than parking lots, it would have to come back and to the board?
Even if it had a parking lot to be developed on the property, it would have to come back to the city. I'm not sure the review process and?
The review process is in order for you to develop any of those permitted uses, they would still have to come back before this body and the planning board to get reviewed under the site plan requirements for that development, because it's vacant property. There's never been any use established on that property. That being said, at that time, we could impose conditions, and I think that's what we were, we were talking about here. You can put conditions on that, on that particular approval based on what's actually being proposed at that time.
So in the future, we can put conditions on, on that property?
Correct.
And there's no way that their capacity can, can increase because it's limited to the one sixty-seven or one seventy, whatever that capacity is?
Correct. Right now, the turtle is governed by the conditional use on the actual turtle itself to that, what the capacity is allowed at this particular time. Any additional request would again have to come back to the conditional use process and be reapproved by this body for final approval.
Thank you.
Okay.
Which, Tarpen?
Thank you. Mr. Attorney, just to follow up on what the mayor alluded to, if the applicant was to enter into a restrictive covenant voluntarily, but we can't, we can't, how do we enforce that? It's basically, I'm trying to figure out.
If the applicant was willing to do that, it would be a recorded restrictive covenant. The restrictive covenant would be one that would be approved by the city attorney's office that would have enforcement mechanisms in it, and those enforcement mechanisms could be things such as coming back before the code enforcement board, coming back here before the commission, or in a worse case scenario, going to circuit court for enforcement if they fail to comply with the terms of that restrictive covenant.
And the zoning doesn't have to be changed for them to voluntarily enter into that?
No.
Okay. Assuming you do change, assuming we do vote yes, at that point, the permitted uses are permitted by right?
Once you approve the zoning tonight, if you approve it, it is permitted by right.
Right. So even though you can review the site plan and say, we'd like you to do this, or we'd like you to do that, with a zoning change, the use is permitted by right?
They still have to go through the site plan approval process, but the use is whatever is provided for in that list.
Thank you.
I just have some of the same concerns that have been mentioned here tonight. I know we can't enforce the, these covenants. It would be nice, especially considering the two parcels that are sep, well, I guess it's one parcel, but the, the larger portion of land that is separated from that piece of land that's owned by the condo association, though behind, I, I think if we were just, at least in my view, dealing with just the one piece of land next, next, next to the parking lot, in my view, it could be easier to digest this, but when looking at that larger piece of land there and the potential for that under the new zoning, if it's approved tonight, I do have some reservations on that and, and would have liked to see the applicant come forth, if, if that's what they want to do with it, is the parking lot, offer those voluntary covenants. So I'm not quite sure myself where to go from here, but I kind of echo the, the same questions and concerns as, as my colleagues. Thank you.
I just had one other question, and you may not be able to answer this, but we received some additional materials. And one of these quotes, that there were thirty complaints in the last six months, and do you know what that's about, or?
I can't answer that specifically because, but I think Chief might be able to shed some light there.
There were twenty-four complaints in the last year.
Okay. We just got information saying thirty in the last six months.
I have the cadence here, so we ran.
All right. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, this is the opportunity for the applicant to cross-examine. Is the applicant here? Mr. Pressman, do you have any questions of the city staff? And if you could introduce yourself, please?
Todd Pressman, three three four, East Lake Road, number one oh two in Palm Harbor, Florida. I don't have any questions for staff, sir.
It would be now the applicant's opportunity to make a presentation.
Mr. Mayor and the whole board here, we hear very clearly what the concerns of the, of the city are. So we would like to move forward, or we would like to move forward with a restrictive covenant. We want to work with the city. We want to work with any neighbors who might have concerns. I'm just a little bit confused on process. I talked to Heather earlier, and then I heard a lot of discussion here. So really, I would divert our discussion tonight on how we can move as quickly forward with a restrictive covenant to keep the use as parking. Mr. Hunt is here, and his team, our whole team is here, and that's clearly, again, where we want to work with the city and work with any neighbors that might have concerns. So I wasn't exactly sure how that process works. As I talked to Heather earlier, I was under the impression we'd file an application, and this would come back to this board thirty, forty-five days, whatever, the same issues, along with a restrictive covenant. I would like to make one additional comment with respect to the police chief. I did visit your office on, yesterday. I asked for a printout of all the complaints that there may be for the site. I was given fifteen separate printouts. I want the, so we have a little bit of a difference of number there. Your staff gave that to me. I do want the mayor commissioner to know that most of those complaints are non-complaints. I have them here. I can read some to you. A lot of them are noise complaint, and it was a leaf blower with a muffler, a stuck motorist. There's never been any citations or any citations by the police or by your code enforcement since the new team's taken over. So I'll get with the police chief so we can get that, that record complete. But again, I did visit your offices and was given those fifteen complaints since the team took over, and again, the great majority of them are non-complaints and were issues that were just non-issues.
Well, I can clarify that real quick. These are cadences that I'm talking about. There was twenty-four from nine sixteen, twenty fourteen, to eight twenty-eight, twenty fifteen. And when we say complaints, not all of them are complaints. Some may be directed patrols, some may be noise nuisances. We had five noise nuisances over that time. So you have to break down all this data, but I was speaking from exactly what we print out from our CAD.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so that's, for the record, that's clear what I said. Now, you can go into each individual call, and some may be directed patrols, some may be disturbance, some may be noise nuisance. We could break it down that way, but I was just, I was just answering the commissioner's question about?
Sure.
The number of cadences that we've had.
Sure, and I'll get together with you, and I just want to make sure we all have, that we're all looking at the information, not that either of us is wrong, but I just, I heard the comment. I want to assure the mayor and commissioners, and I'll go through those in a later date rather than tonight, that again, a great majority of whatever the calls are non-calls, a few of them came for the restaurant, a woman lost her ring. She came back. She couldn't find it, those sort of things, just very non-issues. Thank you.
And just to clarify, for the restrictive covenant, there is an application process that the city attorney would be part of that agreement. They would review everything that came in. So essentially, there is an application process that they would, they would process for that restrictive covenant. We can certainly, we can certainly continue this, this hearing to a date, certain time, where the advertising can be preserved since the public is here and it is noticed. That, that, that hearing would happen if that's the discretion, that's up to the discretion of the board on how you want to continue with that, that two thing. But essentially, it's an application process. It does take some time to process, but it basically comes to this board with the city attorney's approval, obviously, of the content of the agreement.
So we're looking at deferring this till a date certain, or now, in terms of trying to determine what that date would be?
It would need to be done that way, Mayor, so that we can save the city the cost of having to re-advertise. So if anybody is here tonight, they'll know the date and time.
So how much time are you looking at in terms of?
Potentially, the requirements of the application is I have to mail notices to affected property owners within fifteen days of when the application is going to go to hearing. At this point, there's no reason why we can't sequence all three of, the first reading of the two ordinances and that restrictive covenant to be heard the same night, and you can easily make the, either the October sixth or the October twentieth date. I'll leave that up to the applicant to kind of negotiate which works best for them. We'll process it in the planning department through that process, and we can meet those deadlines.
I, I would just suggest, rather than doing a date certain, which gets to be problematic, we'll file the application next day or two. Heather's great to work with, and when we get a better idea of timing, we just pick a public hearing date to come back to.
Well, then we have the expense again of having to pub, to publish it, and we're trying to?
I missed that, I'm sorry.
Why don't we say that, looking at the October twentieth date, or the October sixth, either one, and if there's something happens, then we can easily, I guess, from that defer that until?
What, October twentieth? What was the other date, sir?
The six. Six.
October sixth?
We do the first meeting in November.
October twentieth is tough. That's tough for me. November sixth. November sixth?
Mayor, could I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
I, I'm hearing discussion of the sixth or the twentieth. Isn't it going to be both? Don't we have a first reading and a second reading?
Well, I think you're talking about right now is when will it be brought back for the first reading?
Okay.
And dealing with the second one?
This is the fir, well, yeah, we would be diverting, diverting the first reading of the ordinance, since we're not going to have?
So if we did October sixth, we would also be doing October twentieth for the?
No, we would ha, we still have to. No, we would ha, we still have to meet our obligation to go to the county for, for their review as well, so...
Got you. Okay.
The first reading is all that we have advertised at this point because we're still negotiating that process. So we're adding, just adding an application to the process.
So you're looking at October twentieth? And what I like to do is, you know, because you talked about something, and that's, we have quite a few individuals here that's affected, is to be able to have enough time to talk with everybody, reassure everybody as to what's going to be placed in it as we bring it forward. So are we looking at the twentieth? There's also November third, too.
Yeah.
I mean, I mean, there's... As long as you make a date cer... I believe November third is also...
Yeah, I was just gonna say that part of the discussion on whether or not to do October twentieth or a date certain is basically solely for the advertising expense, correct? So if the applicant, if, if those dates aren't convenient for you, if you wanted to pay for the re-advertising, then we could just do not a date certain, and we could say defer to a future meeting, et cetera. That's the main reason for trying to do a date certain. So I don't know what the advertising expenses are, but just to provide that.
We did make a decision for November, November sixth?
Yeah, we have a third if we're on November, it's October sixth if we're going to October.
And furthermore, mayor, if we could provide some insight to the public in what exactly we're trying to discuss and move forward on doing, since they take the time it came.
Definitely do that, if we can get to this, this point. Right now, just as, as we look at trying to find out, it's one of really trying to see if there's a restrictive covenant that the applicant would agree to as far as the use of that land, and then my thoughts is, there's additional meetings during that time, if there's some additional concerns as it relates to their, because one of the main things in my mind is this, in the staffing report, it says the parking lot should make things safer, and I hear a lot of emails saying it's unsafe. And so those kind of count each, each other, and I think that that needs to be explained. One of the things that we did talk about the last time was that we went to the parking lot, it was going to be no parking on the street. That was going to be putting signs up that, so that we didn't have it, we had a parking lot, and then we go back to having parking on the street. So those type of things hopefully be conveyed so that when we come back, there's a greater understanding about what we have and what's going to take place, so.
Mr. Mayor, in terms of dates, November third is a date that we would ask you to consider.
That's good. Tuesday's a Tuesday. So if we can get a motion right now as far as...
Need a motion to continue both these public hearings until November third, two thousand and fifteen.
Move to continue ordinance twenty fifteen dash sixteen, application fifteen dash four seven, and ordinance twenty fifteen dash seventeen, application fifteen dash four seven to November third meeting, second.
Are we not treating this like it's already been approved to go to commercial by delaying until November third or sixth, or whatever? I mean, you know, let's, let's do step one.
If you, you want to come to the mic and say that?
Can I go ahead and respond to the question? As you're walking up, I think I understand the question. You're wanting to know whether or not anything has been approved tonight or will be approved tonight, and the answer is no. What is happening is, is that the commission is considering a motion to continue the hearings until November the third, and on November third, there will be a full opportunity in the same public hearing that you would get tonight to discuss any matters relevant to both of these applications for the land use change, the zoning change, and discussion relative to any restrictive covenant that is being proposed by the applicant.
It would seem to me that we're putting the cart before the horse. We haven't agreed yet that it's going to go commercial property. My understanding is the current zoning allows for additional parking. It's done the last time they did a lot, in two thousand and seven, I believe it was. They didn't change the zoning.
We, we can't get into any further details about the issue right now. If there's a motion on the floor to continue, I thought I would just answer your question, that no decisions are being made tonight, other than there's going to be a public hearing on November third.
Right, okay.
You got a motion, second roll call?
Commissioner Seaver?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Terapany?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes.
Thank you.
That's for thirteen and fourteen.
Thank you.
Next, we go to miscellaneous item, item number twelve, appointment to Parks Recreation Advisory Board. I think we have four applicants, and it's one selection to replace Mr. Banks. I don't know which side wants to start.
I'll start, I don't mind. Starting up trouble here on the board.
I won't be in trouble.
That's okay. I would motion, or whichever you want to say, for Steve Kline.
Well, we'll see how it goes.
Steve Kline?
Well, Steve Kline.
Steve Kline.
Steve Kline.
You could do your motion.
I motion to appoint Steve Kline as a regular member of the Parks and Rec, Advisory Board.
Second.
Oh, any public comments on this item? Comments from the Boy Scouts? Roll call?
Commissioner Seaver?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Terapany?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. That concludes our agenda. I'll go to the attorney, since the chief is busy.
No comments, mayor.
I have nothing tonight, thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to be here.
Glad to have you.
Thank you.
City manager?
No, sir.
I'm clerk. Commissioner Banther?
I'd like to thank all, all the Boy Scouts for, for coming out tonight. Is this, is this for like a merit badge or one of your class steps? Merit badge, yes. Which troop?
Eighty-five.
Eighty-five, okay. All right, very good. I, 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 I remember that badge, one of the ones I got, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
No comments, thank you.
Commissioner Terapany?
Thank you, mayor. I just wanted to apologize to the board for my upcoming absence. I will be, I believe, out of town in Iceland for one of the budget meetings, moving, I think it's the twenty-first mark, is that right?
Yeah.
So my apologies.
Commissioner Seaver?
No comments.
Well, I will take my time and see if I can see this clock back here, I've got my new glasses. So I believe it's seven forty-seven, we will adjourn this meeting, if the Scouts don't have anything to say.
That's why I started my beer. Usually I don't start until I'm number one.
Oh, yes, oh, yes.
I think they always were.
It was eventful.
Better late than never.
That's how they make it, right?
Well, that's what, that's the goose that we're gonna go hunt.
Oh, that's the goose. He's gonna hunt the goose. It's called a gray leg.
Well, glad to have you.
Thank you, mayor, appreciate it.
Coming back next time, well. Go send Jay back.
Unless there's some...
Oh, man, I tell you what. You know, you know what's gonna feel bad about having your... When you tell somebody that you're... Get off, I'm like...
I'm sure you were gonna make that.
Man, I know what I look at, I think it's...
Figure of thirty in six months, and I thought that's, that's, that's pretty high.
So I started telling them, I said, "You're in the bad... So then they get real serious about it, you know? But what I told them, "Here, come to you." They're like, "Bust out laughing." But I'm telling you, man, that's... I, I am too, I tell you.
Wow, fantastic.
All right, now, you know, you're going out to California. You gotta take care of yourself out there.